Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is about five oh one. We'll call our special meeting to order. Have June the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We do have a core present. We have Mrs. Young, Mr. Richardson, Dr. Schumake, Dr. Brown, and myself, Robert Smith. So at this time, we'll ask Mr. Richardson if he would give our invocation, all about a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and eternal God, our Father in the name of Jesus, we come this evening with thanksgiving and praise in our hearts. Thank you for days past and gone. Thank you for this present time and days that you will give us ahead if it's your will. Father, we thank you for the privilege and opportunity to serve your people. Father, we thank you for everything you've done, what you're doing and about to do as we approach this meeting. Dear God, we actually got our mind, got our tongue. Let our thoughts and our behavior be coming in thy sight. That your name will always get all the honor, the praise, and the glory in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Salute. Praise.
The Lord is the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, which is saying, "My nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, shall be just as one."
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is adoption of agenda, pause DVD, pause B C, B D.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Young, I'll second it. Discussion. All in favor of motion? It is unanimous, no opposed. Four, our four considerations in our discussion to approve CH's volleyball out of state overnight field trip request to participate in a volleyball camp at Alabama A and M University on July the eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion by Dr. Brown, seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. All in favor of the motion? It is unanimous, no opposed. Out of number four. Number four. Number five. Consideration and our discussion to approve additional staff units.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Schumake.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Young. Discussion. I have one question here. Under the additional assistant principal at Hunt, I thought we said we put in the budget. We were not approving at the present time unless we saw a necessary need for it. Is that not what we discussed earlier?
There was a discussion about the putting it in the budget. Uh, but I kinda wanna just share as the reason why I think this is a very, uh, it may be a vital position for, for that, for Hunt. I know this is, you know, having this position is, is gonna be critical for what, for that, for Hunt. And the reason why I think this is gonna be critical is, for one, we're looking at. One of my concerns with, with Hunt, uh, is this is a new place for, uh, four hundred and thirty students. It's gonna be a new environment for, uh, teachers as well. And I've just kinda got some little comparison of what we have right now as far as the middle school. When you're looking at three hundred and eighty-three compared to four hundred and thirty at Hunt. Uh, and some of the personnel that may already be in place at the middle school. But that last number is the concerning part, uh, for me, which was the amount of discipline that was, uh, for the fifth grade, just that fifth grade bunch, uh, from last year in comparison to the entire elementary building. Uh, this was one of the years that was the most concerned, concerning when it came to discipline. Uh, because there were a hundred and forty of those referrals just strictly for fifth graders compared to, uh, the overarching of the other, other, uh, grade level. And so I think we kinda have to be, wanna be a little proactive as we move forward with this, uh, with, with Hunt. Uh, 'cause I, I can see some positive things occurring once we have the right personnel in place. You know, we're looking at the potential challenges of the fifth and sixth grade. We know over the years there's been a concern with the sixth grader as they come together once they get to the middle school. But as we look at, starting next year, we're having two groups of, uh, of grade levels coming together for the first time. So that kinda puts you in, puts me in mind of what some of the issues or concerns that we may be faced if we only have one assistant principal in that building supporting the principal. And so this allows more time for classroom observations, which we definitely wanna put a lot of emphasis on. And we do not want to allow the, uh, the instructional parts to fall at any point when we're trying to deal with behavior and discipline. Uh, also the capacity of it. We know Ms. Young in the past has always prided herself on creating a climate and culture that's conducive to learning, but not only that, for our teachers as well. Uh, and I think having one will pour her more to this, uh, to handling more behavior issues than being able to build the capacity of our teachers. So this was just some of the concerns that I saw. I know we had discussed it, but looking at why, I think having that additional one for that intermediate school in comparison to what we see, some of the same behaviors that we'll see at the middle school.
These numbers that you have from fifth grade discipline from last year, but they are not broken down by schools. So it really don't say which principal dealt with their discipline numbers, 'cause they break it down by five schools. Um, about forty kids, forty plus, maybe fifty kids per school, uh, discipline report wise. And then what was the nature of the discipline? Some question I would have is what would, what would the nature of some of these disciplines that? 'Cause a lot of stuff get rolled up that, uh, teach the right kids of not having pensive. Teach the right kids of for stuff that ain't considered a major discipline area. So I would, I would have reservation right now just saying, uh, discipline because this, this discipline probably handled up here for a little bit differently than Ms. Young handled hers or Dr. Denne handled hers. And so, uh, that's just one of my things, how did it broke down by schools to let's.
Well, uh, it's a good question. And as, as I was viewing these documents, 'cause I, the way I ran this discipline, I just pretty much ran every school. And, um, it actually broke down with what, what, what the incidents were. And you would see everything from fighting to harassment of, of other students, uh, harassment of teachers. And so these incidents were severe incidents, the ones that I, that were pulled. Now, and you're correct, it is divided by five schools. Uh, and their, their, their discipline did range from one hundred, one hundred and, I think, thirty-six from one particular school. And it, it, it kinda went down. And I think those were maybe the schools that were, you may have not had the seasoned administrator at the time, but you know who were able to address some of those issues. But I would say each one of those schools, based on what I saw, um, there were no less than sixty from those particular elementary schools. And these were some of those, uh, like I said, severe behavior issues that, um, incidents that were occurring.
Okay. I know, uh, assistant. Sixth grade would be at the Hunt Elementary School. Okay, so at the, uh, middle school, we reduce the administrator, is that correct?
At the middle school, um, yes, they're down to two assistants.
Yeah. Okay. At the high school, we reduce the administrator. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We're down to.
Okay, so there's been a lot of discipline problem at the high school, right?
That's correct.
But we saw a need at the present time not to replace the administrator that's left, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I understand and respect what you're saying. But at the same time, is that I can approve for it to be in the budget like we approved earlier? But if it was approved and to move forward now, I, I can't support it at the present time.
So, Mr. Chapman, you're, you're asking us to be proactive and help put systems in place to help make, to ensure that we don't have some of the issues that we've had in the past?
Yes, that's, that's what I was asking.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would add on to that, that one of the issues that the new Hunt facility, I think, was designed for was exactly this, to catch discipline problems before they become habitual. And it seems to me that having an assistant principal and an additional one will be able to help focus on this makes a lot of sense.
Is there further discussion? No further discussion? We have a motion and a second, so all in favor of the, uh, motion? Opposed? All right. Three, two vote. Two in favor, three against. All right. Next on our agenda, Mr. Chairman, I ask, you've also got the two secretary positions.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not, we're not approving any of those positions, is that correct? Okay, thank you. I'll make that note.
All right. All right, if not, then we move on, uh.
Mr. Smith, I'm gonna recuse from A and B.
Or consideration and our discussion to approve opposed salary schedule?
Yes, on those two.
From A?
Two salary scales, A and B. Yeah, that means recuse from those two.
All right. I just do them, uh, individually. I wouldn't, but I, I will now. Okay. A, twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, salary schedule twenty-seven, uh, central office, administrative assistant, and receptionist. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Richardson, discussion. All in favor of the motion? B, twenty-five, twenty-six, salary schedule twenty-eight, in the level, clerical. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Mr. Richardson. I have a second. I'll second. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? No opposed. Dr. Brown, we're at item C. Twenty-five, twenty-six, salary schedule, twenty-nine, maintenance director, maintenance staff, ground staff. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Dr. Brown. I'll second it. Discussion. All in favor of the motion? It is unanimous, no opposed. D, twenty-five, twenty-six, salary schedules, thirty, custodial director and custodial staff. Have a motion by Dr. Brown. Seconded by Mr. Richardson. Discussion. All in favor? It is unanimous, no opposed. E, twenty-five, twenty-six, salary schedule thirty-three, transportation director, mechanic, driver, monitor. That, I have a motion by Dr. Brown. I'll second it. Discussion. All in favor? Ms. Young, did you go?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so it is unanimous, no opposed. Okay. Seven, consideration and our discussion to approve twenty-five, twenty-six certified staff recommendation. Have a motion by Dr. Brown. Second. Discussion. I second it. No discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
I'm gonna have to recuse on A and T.
Okay. Consideration and our discussion to approve twenty-five, twenty-six non-certified staff recommendation. So moved. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Third time, do I have a second? Okay, so we die. All right. Let's go to, uh, number nine. Y'all with it? Yeah, I'm waiting. Consideration and our discussion to approve administrative personnel agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mrs. Young. I'll second it. Discussion. All in favor? It is unanimous, no opposed. And consideration and our discussion?
Yes, my team.
Okay. Consideration and our discussion to approve personnel agenda, staff recommendation. Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Third time, do I have a second? So we die. Lack of second. Okay? Did you ask?
Ms. Rogers.
On to number eleven. I have to recuse myself. Yeah, I have to recuse myself. Yeah.
You're welcome. Yes, sir. All right. Next, we have, um, the next item, consideration and our discussion to approve the county's payable docket. We have a motion. Um, Mr. Richardson?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Schumake. We have a motion and a second. I'll, is there any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor. And it is unanimous. You're welcome.
Okay, twelve, consideration and our discussion to approve twenty-five, twenty-six insurance coverage recommendation. Uh, Mrs. Roger. You have a flow. And we do have Mr. Brent Galloway that, uh, we have any questions that I'm quite sure he can answer, those in the office. All right.
So if you guys will look at the premium schedule, no matter which premium we decide to go with, or premium limit, the premium is actually decreased from what it was for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Currently, we have a seventy-five million limit, but the one hundred and forty million limit is within our budget as well. Uh, it is absolutely a board decision. I would like to see the one hundred and forty million dollar limit because we all remember how much it's costing us to replace Hunt facility. So I pray to God that nothing like that happens in our district again, but I would like to be really prepared if it did. But, um, even the million dollar premium that you can see on the left or the right-hand side of the sheet is less than the current premium that we paid for this year. But it's, I get absolutely a board decision. Do you have any questions about the carriers of this coverage or anything?
So. So out of the two options, so your recommendation to the board is, this is what, Ms. Rogers?
One hundred and forty million dollar limit. It's the premium of one million, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay. Ms. Young?
I would just like some information on, if possible, um, how the carriers, that's, that part is going to be handled. I know in the past it was, it was a little, uh, complex, uh, in our, in our lane, but just if you could explain that part to us.
Now, there's a mic up here, Mr. Kevin. Just go ahead.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Uh, it's very similar to the setup that we had last year. Okay, so prior to this current policy term, we had one carrier that did all lines of coverage, uh, that happened to be Liberty Mutual. Liberty Mutual's still doing all other lines of coverage except for the property. Uh, I think there are a couple of school districts within the state where they still write the property, but very few. Um, so this last year, we were, we were for the current policy period, we were forced to go out into the marketplace and do what we call a layered loss program. If y'all would recall, you, you may not, when I met with you guys last year, it was very complicated, but we were able, able to buy seventy-five million dollars worth of limits last year. The district has more than that in terms of values, property values, on a replacement cost basis. Um, but we were, we were able and willing to buy seventy-five last year. Uh, and that was with about eighteen different property carriers participating in different layers of, of those limits. So the first twenty-five million, for instance, had about six or seven carriers that participated in covering first twenty-five million dollars worth of limits. And then it was stacked up above that to get to that total of seventy-five million dollars worth of property values that were insured. Um, this year, there's been a little bit more capacity to come back into the marketplace. So it's actually at a little lower cost for a property premium to get a hundred and forty million dollars of property limits this year as opposed to seventy-five. You could still buy the seventy-five at a, at, at even further savings. But we can go back up to a hundred and forty million dollars of, of replacement cost property values at a lower cost than what we're currently buying seventy-five for. It's still the same setup. There's still a participation. It's still a layered loss program. There were about eighteen carriers that participated in this current policy in the property layers. Uh, there's, there's, I, I think from memory, twelve on the renewal. So you'll see there's more capacity coming back into the marketplace. The pricing has begun to come down, so much to your advantage, uh, much, much happier time for me to come bring a proposal to you than it was last year. Um, but, I mean, I, I don't, I don't make the market. We certainly, I work for you guys, not Liberty Mutual or any of these other carriers for that matter. I work for y'all. Um, but it i- it is a better marketplace than it was. Y'all just have options in terms of which limits you wish to buy.
All right. Thank you for explaining that.
Are there any other questions? From Mr. Galloway? Dr. Schumake?
Just, just one quick question. Um, I understand, where is the cybersecurity insurance located? What's that under?
It, it is in, it is built within the Liberty Mutual policy.
Okay.
Uh, and it, and it is in there with a million dollar limit. It's under the general liability policy.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right. No further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a question?
I know, I was gonna.
Well, I believe Ms. Young, you was first, go ahead.
No, 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 I was, I was making my vote, I'm sorry, I, I, I got too fast.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna make a, I was gonna move that we accept the hundred and forty, where is it?
Yeah.
We have a motion. The hundred and forty million limit.
All right. I'll second it. So we have a motion by Dr. Schumake to accept a hundred and forty million. And I'll, uh, second it. Is there further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion? It is unanimous, no opposedes? Thank you. All right. Okay. Thirteen, consideration and our discussion to approve assistant of search interview. And, uh, it was added because it have a soon meeting, uh, discussion. When we talked to, uh, Dr. Henderson and Dr. Jackson, discussion came up. Discussion came up as far as the process when, after it was, uh, like, after they finished the, uh, the deadline, and they narrowed down the applicants that qualified, uh, concerning the job description. And they meet with us, give it to us, and we narrowed down to the five as far as the interview process. I know in the past, the interview process has been going all around the community, and with some of the board members, we had discussed that maybe narrow it down. I was one in favor of narrowing it down, but also, as far as having the, uh, big meeting where we invite the public, uh, when we narrow to the top three. Then they have to go and make a deci, make a decision. So, at this time, it's up, uh, uh, discussion, but, uh, as far as the, 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 uh, big meeting before we decide from the top three. Uh, me personally, I'm in favor of having the, uh, meeting, whether it's at Cook or wherever the case may be, and inviting the public. And so, floor is open. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am, Dr. Schumake?
Thank you. Um, I think it was very helpful to get, I believe it was around thirty-nine or forty pages, uh, done from the in-depth online surveys that were done, uh, prior to Dr. Ellis's, or prior to the previous superintendent's selection. And I feel pretty comfortable reading over those, that a lot of the both positives and negatives have remained more or less the same. So, as far as going around and doing, you know, uh, smaller focused groups or things like that, I'm not really sure that that is, at this point, necessary. Um, I don't know if anybody else had time to read through it, but it was, it was very enlightening. You know, it was a couple of years ago too, but I don't think enough has really changed to warrant a number of, uh, an extended process, I guess. Because I know at one point, uh, Dr. Henderson, or maybe Dr. Jackson, I can't remember which one, offered to do another online survey, which is a possibility. So, that, that is, you know, that, I think, if we do any s- smaller surveys, that would probably be the way to go as opposed to trying to gather people together.
Other board members? Ms. Young?
Um, I think I agree. We, if we would have, you know, we could have one community meeting, um, and those that come attend and participate instead of, last time we had, there were a number of meetings. And that way, everybody has a, you know, an opportunity to see the candidates, and we can move forward with one meeting. I think that'll be enough.
Dr. Brown and Mr. Richardson?
I agree, one meeting, but all of that, those stuff that you did last time, I don't think that's necessary.
So, what about the online survey?
Okay.
I'm just asking a question.
She makes head then from reading over the survey that she got all of the pages. I don't know how much has changed that she really would need to. I mean, if you do it, I ain't put that way without just saying, I want, I might have changed that you really would want to go back and have to do another survey.
It's a part of their service.
So, what, it was also mentioned about the round table, as far as having, including a round table. So, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing out some things here. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was, if I can pick up on that?
Yes, sir. Good man, good man.
Um, I think one thing we might try to do a little bit differently is be more aggressive in reaching out to groups. And that would be, for instance, the superintendent's round table, people that over, uh, over the years have, have been coming to meetings, have been very involved in the district. And I think if we, you know, reach out to that group, uh, and other, uh, groups that are, that are out there, maybe the folks that worked with us on the bond issue, uh, ones that we know have an interest, and use that as sort of a base, and then, and work from that out to open it up to people in the community. Uh, ones that know, you know, that have shown, um, significant interest over the, the past several years. That might be a way to structure it a little bit differently, instead of just, and just saying, everybody come, and then, but to purposely reach out to people who have, have been involved. Uh, the board could do that, and I think it would give us a good base.
Dr. Brown?
Um, I'll agree with the one community meeting and, uh, use the survey information that we currently have. Because of the length of time that it was just given the last time, it probably has not changed very much. I, I wouldn't think it would, but it may a little bit, but I think our surveys will be current enough to use.
So, in other words, we don't need to worry about the survey? Okay. Is that the consensus of the board?
I kind of would, would think that it can, may enlighten us on a little bit more. I don't know. If it's part of the service, do we want to just nix it, or are we saying we, we okay with what we had two years ago?
And like I said again, I don't know what dramatically have changed, I mean, from what you did that short period of time back. So, knowing this area, knowing what we're working with it, the time limits we got, I don't see where it gonna make a whole lot different. Could there be something extra, but how much more difference is it gonna make?
Well, have you seen? Okay, so that was two years ago, right? So, there are, I'm quite sure there are some changes that have occurred within the district within the two years. And I'll attest to what Mrs. Young said, that we paying them for this service anyway, so what do we have to do? Whether we do it or not, we still gotta pay that same amount of money. I mean, that's just matter of due sense.
Yeah, and, um, upon reconsideration, that makes sense, and there's very little, as it were, work. I mean, we don't, they come up with a survey. We don't have to do it. It's online. It's, they're not having meetings like they used to do surveys. So, it would all be electronic, and if we are already, it's part of our contract. It doesn't have to be up that long either. I think we can set the terms.
So, for clarification, all right, one community meeting, okay, online survey, all right. What about the superintendent's search committee? Just delete that up. We want to include it. Asking a question. The superintendent, I, I, I mean, the superintendent round table. Uh, that's what I mean.
Oh, oh, no. The superintendent round table was just part of the one big meeting. I'm just suggesting.
We just kind of encourage them to come.
Encourage.
So, you got a cross-section of people within the community that serve on the round table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was it, just trying to figure it out.
Down, have your PTO, if it's building, you're, um...
That's a good idea.
We have a student advisory committee also, advisory.
And, Ms. Woodard, would you have a list of all those? Uh, okay. That would be great. We just have to...
Okay, so it's a discussion to approve the superintendent, just a consideration and a discussion to approve the superintendent's search, uh, interview. So, uh, I guess we can make a motion to, uh, to have one large community meeting and an online, uh, survey by MSBA. Is that correct? All right. So, I'll make the motion to that effect. Can I get a second? A second by Mr. Richardson. Is there further discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. No opposed? We just it. And then we have adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion by Dr. Brown. I'll second it. Is there further discussion? Not all in favor of the motion? The adjourn? It is unanimous. Thank you.